So I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Dover School Committee for Thursday, December 17th, 2020. This open meeting is being conducted remotely, consisting of Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12th, 2020. Information on how to join remote school committee meetings and meeting agendas are posted on the Dover Sherburne District website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, and please be aware that anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. You think I would know that by heart by now, but anyway, I still have to read it. So, community comments are first. Please remember that community comments are an opportunity for us to listen. To members of the community is not a forum for answering questions, and we will not be answering questions tonight. Once the public comment section of the meeting has been concluded, we will move on to other business and unsolicited comments from the community will no longer be permitted. So are there any community comments? I'm looking at some names and not many faces. Anyone? Okay, seeing none. Let's move on to the principals report. Dr. Reiman?
Good evening, everyone. I hope you all fared the storm well and got some time out to play in the snow as well. Excellent. The, I have submitted my principal's report addressing everything from expanding to our four fives in for four days, some of the challenges and successes we've had along the way. We certainly are blessed as a district to have an amazing building. I can't say enough how thankful we are having large classrooms and small class sizes. It's made all the difference in being able to bring everyone in. We still have glitches and pieces we're working on. Travel, at the end of the day, I met with a group of teachers this afternoon, and we're struggling to get dismissal spaced out, so we're still working on that piece. And then there's always the concern about even tomorrow that we won't have a lot of outside space to get into. So how will we make sure we get enough space for snack? But we'll figure it out, I'm sure we will. We figured out every other challenge that's come along, so it's working out quite well. We had a phenomenal professional development day the end of November, which I think Beth spoke about at the joint school committee meeting last night, or excuse me, last week. And, this is my third item, I thought I remembered them all. Oh, and then we have some personnel changes coming up, which are listed in there, some maternity leaves coming, which is very exciting. And so we'll be looking for some long-term substitutes there. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Yeah, there's something in the water over there on across, huh? That's great.
Bring people within a month of each other's.
Yeah, that's what, it happens. You see these, like ER nurses, right? Where suddenly there's 10 of them who are expecting at the same time, so, thanks Deb. Are there any questions for Deb from committee members?
I just, I wanted to say.
Tell me first, yeah.
Deb, I just appreciate all that you've been doing, and I really feel like you've risen to the challenge, so thank you so much, because we're all benefiting from that. I also want to say thank you for answering the issue of what to do with kids when they need to stay home, they're otherwise healthy but need to stay home, and having a plan for that. So I did, I appreciate that that's moved forward. Can you talk a little bit about that, what that will look like?
Sure, so we are working within the district, so we are aligning with Pine Hill as much as we can on this, as well as some of the procedures set up at the middle school and the high school. So when children are out of school for travel, just a regular old sick day, or they're choosing to quarantine because they're preparing for a trip, we can provide materials for them there. Families that are home because of COVID-related issues, so whether they have a positive family member, they are positive, or they're waiting for quarantining results, we want to make sure that we can help them as well. So it sort of splits into two categories, people who can choose to be out and who can't choose to be out, really. And in both cases, trying to support families and students with sending work home where possible, in some cases zooming in, but it's all up to the teacher's choice. Some rooms lend itself to that more fluidly than others. Teachers have been experimenting with it, some find it easier, some find it more challenging, so we're ready to support families and teachers either way on that.
So they can, they can assign work and try to keep the kids up with the class. I know some of these COVID tests can take, you know, up to five days to come back, and that's painful, a painful loss of academics, so.
Absolutely, and there doesn't seem to be any pattern that I can find yet of which ones are coming back quickly and which ones are dragging out. So if you know the secret and you could let us know, that would be great.
Thank you for your continual problem solving.
I couldn't do it without my team.
I know.
I have the best team of teachers and educational assistants and partner in crime and Jim, it's, I couldn't do it alone.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's just kind of mind-boggling, as we've said before, so thank you. Sarah, do you want to jump in?
Actually, just to follow up, that, Colleen, that was precisely the area that I wanted to ask about too, and just to make sure I understand, so there are these sort of two groups, the groups that, that sort of, you know, are absent for reasons that are, you know, family choice versus absent because of following COVID protocols. So are they being treated the same or are they being treated differently?
They are treated differently, slightly differently, in terms of their ability to be in or out. And it's hard, because, you know, we had a family that's reached out to us this past week that they want to visit their grandma who's in state, so that's, it's a, you know, an allowed visit, right? They're not going out of state, but they want to stay home in quarantine so they can get a full, healthy window in front of going to see her. And it doesn't that seem like that's a COVID safety measure? It's like, it seems so clean, right? One group, the other group, and now you get that, and you're like, oh, but they're choosing to quarantine. So we're going to know so much for the book that Beth is going to write about this.
Andrew, is that, this is the same that the high school is doing? Is that correct? Like, this is across the district?
Yep, we actually, as building leaders, traded our letters with each other last week, so we're all using the same language.
Sorry, Sarah, I didn't mean to, excuse me.
No, not at all, that's, that's all helpful, and, and just again, thank you, thank you, thank you, on behalf of elementary parents. I know that people are really thrilled to have the fours and fives back in four days a week, and we know that mountains had to be moved in order to make that happen, and they were moved by you, so, and all of the members of your team, so thank you. We are very grateful and hope to be able to continue in a way that's safe for all involved.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It's been hard work by everyone in the building, and, and we're tired. We're ready for a break, so, but thank you, I appreciate it.
Well-deserved break.
Thank you.
I wanted to, for those that didn't see it, just, and you didn't mention it, Deb, so I just wanted to, if you could just highlight the session you did the other day, and your commitment to students' social emotional learning, the pandemic influenced student experience was really interesting, and I saw, Rob put a thumbs up there, was great, and, you know, just so needed, so I don't, do you want to say a few words about, about that?
Sure, it's another great example of the phenomenal team around me. As we were working through the year, we're seeing some behaviors in school that are not unusual but are definitely increasing, and then we were hearing from parents too about behaviors at home that were more significant than usual, and was that a result of the pandemic, or was that just a result of y'all spending a lot of time together? So I asked Andrew McCorkle, our Adjustment Counselor, and Kate Marquesi, our School Psychologist, if they could help us out by running a parent session, much like Jess Natal did about a month ago. So they put together a great presentation, and we walked through, they walked through, I stood on the side and cheered about how the pandemic and the school closures and the remote learning have affected students' social emotional health, and what's now sort of typical in that range, and what's atypical? So when should you be concerned? And then, how do you reach out for help in the, in those cases? I thought they did a really nice job of understanding parents' perspective and offering support. So we had great attendance, we had about 30, 35 people, and I can see from my YouTube channel that the recording's been viewed a few times too, so it's nice.
Very, thank you. Anything else for Dr. Reiman before we move on? No, okay, thank you. Let's move on to Dr. Kyo, you're up.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Deb, for that report. So as I've mentioned before in the past, you know, this has been a, this has been a challenging year, and I think we all know it, it's been tough on us as leaders. When Deb says she's tired, or they're tired, we all are, I think, across the board, and it's hard to even, you know, find positive things to say at times, because you're just barded with these negative experiences that pop up. But I have to say, there have been some silver linings, and one has really been the leadership that, that Deb has provided to Chickering School this year. She has really risen to the occasion, and that's not easy. Being a building principal is really hard, you have to, you have multiple stakeholders that you have to keep happy. And I'm not making any commentary about Dover or Sherburne, but I spent my whole life here, and we are a demanding population, that is the truth. We have high expectations of ourselves, we have high expectations of our school leaders, and, and I think that it takes a really unique personality to, to manage that and not get overwhelmed by it, and, and still be positive. And Deb has done that this year. I actually did do some surveying recently of families and staff, these are some of the, the things that I heard from teachers. I'll just use phrases, I'm not going to get into too, too long a statement, "understanding, calm and upbeat, listens thoughtfully, pushes us to be the best educators we can be, kind and supportive." And there was another one I did not write down, but I just thought of it, because I was listening how Deb said, "Yeah, we'll get through it," that is something that people say about Deb all the time, is that she will say, "Yes, this is going to be hard, but we will get through it, and we will help you," and how can we be helpful? That is something that teachers wrote. Parents, incredible, the support from parents, positive feedback from parents, professional, approachable, accessible, all hugely important traits as principals, positive, passionate. She and Jim are rock stars. Who gets that kind of feedback? So, especially in a pandemic, so it's for this reason, honestly, that I think it makes, it makes no sense to go out for a, in search of a principal, when we have a fine principal in the role right now. Deb's done such a great job, and hence I've made the decision to, to name her the permanent principal of Chickering. And we've talked through a contract, and that I think is, is good for her and good for the system, and she will officially start on July the 1st as the permanent principal, but it is, it is done. We do not need to do a search, in my opinion, and I hope that I'll have your support for this. And I'm just really, really excited about, about this. So I don't know if you guys have questions for me, I'm open to, to whatever it is you need to do or ask.
Happy faces.
Well, you know, seriously, think about how hard this year has been, and how can you be positive? It's hard, it's tough, and yet Deb does it day in and day out, and Jim deserves a ton of credit too. People say that they're visible, they see them out there every day, they feel like the school is safe, and that their kids are safe when they're dropping them off, and, you know, that kind of being visible stuff, it matters, it makes a difference to, to, to parents, so I really think we're, we're just blessed, we're lucky. Chickering hit pay dirt, and you know, don't forget, Deb has been with us, how many years, Deb, have you been at Chickering? 12?
Since the building opened, 2001.
Okay, a little more than 12. So I think it's sort of in your DNA.
Thank you.
So I'm really, really proud of you. I didn't get into what I was planning to say about your, your work on the leadership team either, because you've been such a strong team member and collaborator. We have never had the kinds of relations that we do right now between Chickering and Pine Hill, and that is a beautiful thing. We need to work together, and Barb and Deb have been incredibly collaborative and open-minded and flexible, and I'm just really impressed.
Do you want to say something, Deb, I want to put you on the spot now?
I can, I can, thank you. Thank you, Andrew, for your very kind words, and thank you, as always, to the whole network. This community is amazing and challenging, and it's never a dull moment, and I'm grateful, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb, it's well-deserved.
I think, I speak for myself, and I don't think I'm just speaking for myself because I've had so much feedback, but I've been incredibly impressed with your leadership, you're just calm, positive, solutions-oriented, and, you know, I was thrilled when you took on the interim position in these crazy circumstances, and I'm really grateful that we can rely on your steady hand going forward, so, thank you. And I'd be remiss not to thank Jim as well, because I hear much about the dynamic duo over there at Chickering, and so we're, Jim, very grateful for the job that you're doing as well, and thank you for, both of you, for keeping our kids safe and happy and learning, and, you know, it's going so much better than I ever could have expected, and that's down to you all, so. I don't know if any other members want to say anything, or you don't have to, just thank you, Dr. Kyo, for making it official, so.
You're welcome, and I know that Deb will do a great job, just knows she will, and that was another comment that came up from parents, is that the real test is that their kids love her. So that's a challenge.
Kids love her. See us every month now for time of memorial.
Exactly.
Don't change your mind, okay. Um, so move on, is that, are we good? Okay, thank you.
Unless anyone has a major objection.
No, none.
Okay.
Okay, oh, my plow just showed up, so I hope, I'm going to put it on mute in a sec. Um, okay, the warrant reports, Dawn, do you want to take that?
Sure, so you have quite a long report this month, only because you haven't met since October, but we've listed out for you the warrants that have been processed from October 20th through December 2nd. You'll notice, as we go through tonight, we're talking about sort of the CARES reopening, so you'll see those specific warrants separate, because every time we process a warrant for the town, it is in a batch based on the fund it's getting charged to. So I think that helps you sort of see how the, the funds are processed, and definitely aligns with the budget that we'll be talking about, so, because you can see sort of your general fund operating, your general fund out of district, your circuit breaker, so hopefully as we continue to talk about all this, it'll all start coming to be a clearer picture of how your finances work. And again, if you ever want to look at the warrants in detail, Mark is your signer right now, but always feel free to reach out to us, because we can make those available for your review, if you want to just look at a little bit more of the detail behind the numbers.
Dawn, is the town hall open? Is he going to town hall to sign, or?
He is on certain days, so it's by appointment only.
Okay.
But he, yeah, he is making, I think it works out well for him, because they work until 5 o'clock, I think he can go home on his way, go to, go there on his way home from work.
Do we have a backup person still?
I think Leslie is the backup person, yeah, but Mark's been able to, to cover us right now.
Okay, and just, Leslie, just, let's think about, like, going into the spring, and maybe things will open up a little more, either, you know, Sarah or Colleen, maybe teaching them how to do that as well, so there's, you don't always, you've done it for a couple of years now, right?
Well, really, Mark has done it this year, and I think the best person to kind of teach Sarah or Colleen is Dawn, I definitely learn the most from Dawn.
Yeah, I was, and we have copies of the warrants in our office, so I'm always happy to do a tutorial at our place, and that way, then y'all, then I can translate what happens there, but we keep copies of everything, and it's probably easier to do that, so, yeah, definitely in the spring, happy to sort of walk through and, and show people what, what that's all about.
Yeah, it's a good way to really see where the money is going.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, you see every invoice, so.
I know, it's eye-opening. Okay, any questions on, on the warrant report? Nope? Okay, well, that slides have done into the financial report, so.
Exactly, so what I've been trying to do for all the committees this year, is sort of do a rolling report, so that you always have the whole year sort of synopsis, so I don't mention something one month, it falls off and you forget about it. So I will just highlight for you, there are very few changes between your October report and your December, December 11th report. In salaries, the only new change is that we have added an extra educational assistant. A lot of this has to do with bringing back the four or fives full-time, we want to make sure we have enough staff to handle all the, the break, the lunches, et cetera. For these salaries that we're, have incurred since the start of school through December 30th, that were unbudgeted positions due to COVID, we do have the opportunity to charge those to the CARES reopening, so I'm in the process right now of looking at all of our expenses and appropriately pulling from the general fund some things that belong, that are allowable in the CARES fund. In your financials right now, one EA is already in the CARES fund, there's one in the general fund now, but I plan to pull out some salaries when we're doing our final work on the, the CARES grant. On expenditures, the only new thing, you'll notice that I have encumbered regular education transportation, and you approved the amendment to the contract, I think at the last joint meeting, so there are some savings, which actually helped Dover this year, because if you remember, I pointed out to you that when we spread the contract reserve, we had enough for all the salaries, we were just short about $10,000 for transportation, so that savings this year actually helps offset that short, that shortage, and we'll see that again when you look at your budget for fiscal year '22, because you had a little larger increase in that line item because of that, so it all sort of relates. And out of district, we continue to see placement activity, so since we last spoke, we have two more students that were placed out of district, some of those were already in the works, and it's just that, it's been finally finalized so that I could record the encumbrances, but we are now up to eight new placements, so that has elevated your, or increased your negative variance a little bit. Though I think the last report I had for you was intuition about 470 to 570 now, so you're looking at about a $700,000 over expenditure in out-of-district, but remember, and we'll talk about this more when we look at the budget, you do have the million-one in circuit breaker, that sort of is your cushion for that, so that we have enough funds to cover the expenditures, although you see a lot of red, there is money there to cover it because of the circuit breaker. And then I just again gave you the synopsis of the COVID-related grants, again thanking the town for the money that I'd already shared with you, that they allowed us to use of their grants, and we will present a full accounting of both grants to you at your January meeting, because by then the grants period will have ended.
Dawn, I was going to ask this when we go into the budget, but since it's kind of highlighted here, these eight new placements, for those that are not familiar or that are watching, might it be helpful to just reiterate that those are not necessarily Chickering?
Yeah, so I was going to, yeah, highlight that when we start talking about the pieces of the budget, but just remember that your out-of-district that you oversee for the Dover budget is for all Dover residents, so that's any student who is age three up to 22, so that's who are mandated to cover, and so it's, it's not, it's not your, you're covering the regional aides students along with anyone who's 18-plus in your budget, and that's based on the regional agreement that we have between the two towns for the, the regional school district. So Sherburne covers all of their residents, Dover covers all their residents, so the region carries no out-of-district in their budget, it sits on the two locals.
Thank you, I think that's helpful, because otherwise that number looks.
Yeah, so a little, a little overwhelming, but when you get to, when we talk about out-of-district, you'll see how many we have aging out and graduating, so in the last two years, it's just the way the numbers have fallen for Dover, but luckily, it's, it's, it's actually not as large of an increase as it seems in the current year.
Okay, so committee members, is there any questions for Dawn on the update report? Be good? I'm, I'm sure there'll be questions as we get to the, into the budget. Okay, so, let's see, we're moving on to the Advisory Committee on Extra Duties Recommendation, Dr. Kyo.
Yes, thank you. One of the, well, as I mentioned before, one of the benefits of having this collaborative relationship with Pine Hill is that it allows Deb and Barb to really process, process the way they're doing things in terms of providing curriculum leadership, and obviously, Beth's always involved in those conversations, in fact, they have a regular elementary leadership team meetings, but one of the things that's arisen over time is, is the need for more curriculum leadership, and, and those are stipended positions, and, and which means they are covered in the contract, it's Appendix C of our teacher's contract is where we include stipends, and, you know, there are, perhaps unfairly, but there are more stipended positions at the high school, between athletics, after-school clubs, those are your typical stipend positions, but our curriculum leaders that we currently have are also in Appendix C, so any kind of change to that model has to go through the ACED, and Deb and Barb brought forward to the ACED the proposal to, to add two more curriculum leaders and to actually rename them to be Professional Learning Committee leaders. PLCs are basically groups of educators coming around the table to talk about what's working and what isn't, that's essentially it, but the curriculum leaders, the PLC leaders will lead those conversations at, at the grade level, as opposed to by subject area, and so this is, this is a shift, but it would require two more, two more leaders, bringing us to six, and this has been approved at Pine Hill, I'm hoping we can do the same at Chickering. The cost breakdown, you can see, it's basically the 1,500 times the ratio, which is set at 2.5, currently with four of them, that's costing us $15,113. If we were to go to six, it would cost the district 22,670, an increase of $7,557. So I'm asking for the committee's support on this, I don't know, Deb, if I missed something there?
You did not, we've been operating with six PLC leaders who very generously have been splitting the stipend of four over the past couple of years, so I will be thrilled to be able to fully compensate these teacher leaders.
Yes, sorry, my bad, I forgot about that.
Minor detail, thank you.
And by the way, while I have this chance, much thanks to those teachers, because they've been taking it at a reduced rate, so we're thankful to them, that's very professional and generous of them.
And I'll add the timeline as such, that this allows you to make these changes, and then we can incorporate them into the next year's budget, so that's why this is, the time is, is, the timing is that you do this. So that's why this is, the time is, the timing is that you do this now, so that we can incorporate into the budget. So right now, this isn't in the budget we're presenting tonight, but it'll be one of your first budget revisions if it's approved.
Well, thank you for bringing to our attention Deb and Andrew. We certainly, makes a lot of sense, in my opinion. And, and it also aligns us with Pine Hill, right? So any wins we can do that is always a bonus. Are there any questions?
It's actually them who are aligning with Chickering.
No, we're not playing that game.
Well, Chickering did have the six. I forgot about that. Deb just reminded me, so she's right.
Yeah, um, yeah, we're not keeping score. We are really, but we're. Um, are there any questions from committee members for Andrew or Deb about this? Okay, we're going to vote then. We do need to vote on this. So do I have a motion to accept the ACED recommendation as presented in your packet?
Leslie, Leanne, I'll move the motion.
And a second?
Erica Gutierrez, done, second.
Any discussion? Okay, I do roll call. Colleen?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Sarah?
Erica Gutierrez, done, yes.
Leslie?
Leslie, Leanne, yes.
And Brooke Metteris, yes. So, thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, we'll move on to the PK tuition rates for FY '22. I don't, Dawn, do you want to take that?
Yes, so we are trying to keep our preschool tuition rates on par with our increase in salaries. So on an annual basis, we are bringing forward rate increases for the preschool program. And remember, this is an integrated preschool program where we have both students who are on IEPs and then general regular ed students, so that they have actually peers to be with. And so we are bringing forward again the 2% increase in the fiscal year 21 rates. And the new rates are shown for you. Keep in mind too that we changed a little bit the programming structure of the pre-K last year, where we just have the two rates, you have a three-day rate and a five-day rate. And that is to better align the needs of our IEP students with our general ed cohort. So I think it's, even though we're under the hybrid model this year, it appears to be working well. And both Kate McCarthy and Naomi would like to continue with that, that same sort of structure. And approve the rate increase that the business office recommended to them.
Are there any questions for Dawn?
I have one question. So they're going four days though, this week, this year. Has that been adjusted for the five-day rate, or are they doing the remote, on the remote days as well?
They are not doing the remote days. I believe that they, they did have to work something a little different in the plan this year. So they are not, they're going, if I understand it correctly, they're going, there's a cohort that's going two days and another cohort that's going two days. Correct, yeah. So we prorated the three-day rate for them.
Um, I just, I trust your recommendation, Dawn. I just want to, I know in the past, we've seen comparisons to other preschools in town, and so is in New York's.
Yeah, so we do the comparisons every couple of years. I think that only because we only do a 2% increase, and I think most other preschools do a little bit more. That we, we're usually, you know, down more either in the middle or on the lower quadrant of the area preschools.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure so that.
I can speak on the two preschools I've been to, and you guys are still lower than both of those, so.
Yeah, I know we've seen those figures before. I just wanted to know if you, in your experience, I know you probably did know the percentage.
Right, and they look, they look larger because we're not offering them morning and afternoon. It's if you come to our preschool, you come full day.
Right, okay. Okay, any other questions?
By the way, this is a, the, the Integrated Preschool is a really good, good, important program for our students who have been identified with special needs. They need to be with their, their peers, their, their non-special needs peers. And it's, so it's mutually beneficial, and it provides some pre-K for families who would love to have it kind of one-stop shopping at the school. In fact, I'm sure that the community would be thrilled if we would just run a preschool, which we used to do as a district over the CDC, was run by the, the school system. We're not doing that, but this program is excellent, and it is a keeper.
Well, it also keeps, just to talk about out of district a little bit, you're age three, right? So the Chickering preschool was added because there was a couple of years where we had six to eight preschoolers placed out. And so there was definitely a need for this program, and that's how it came to Chickering. And it has definitely, continues to serve the population. And I think that our, we used to have a couple more classes, but that's because the cohort was larger. So we sort of, sort of appropriately have our programming to serve that need without without trying to have a regular ed preschool, just to have a preschool. It's there for a particular purpose. And so right now, that's, having the one classroom has, has kept the students in district and provided this opportunity for regular ed students also.
Thank you. I love when you give the backgrounds, because you know, we rush through things so much, we kind of forget that this is new to
Right.
then people that are watching, and the context is really helpful. So thank you both of you for remembering to do that.
Could you just remind us what the percentages of gen ed students in there?
And so it can't be more than 50, it's like 50/50. And if you have a class of 15, it's seven special ed and eight regular ed is sort of the not the normal spread. That's how a normal 15 person preschool would run.
And what happens, or has happened, we've seen happen both in Dover and Sherburne. I think definitely Sherburne, I'm not sure about Dover, is is that because it's attractive, it's reasonably priced, it's at Chickering School, we have a fairly sizable population of people who would like to take advantage of it, who may not have special needs children. And we've noticed that those ratios have ticked a little bit out of whack and actually pushed us up to a point where we needed to have another room of it. And it wasn't really justified in terms of the number of special needs kids. And what we, it's, it's, it's not supposed to be a moneymaker. It's not intended to be a moneymaker. It's, it's, it's really, it's a program for the special needs kids. We're lucky that the gen ed kids come and pay, but it is a special needs program.
Any other questions before we vote?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, um. Do you see, do I have a motion to accept the pre-K tuition rates for FY '22 as presented in your packet?
Leslie, Leanne, I'll move the motion.
A second?
Colleen Burt, second.
Any discussion? And I do roll call, Colleen?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Sarah?
Sarah Gutierrez, done, yes.
Leslie?
Leslie, Leanne, yes.
And Brooke Metteris, yes. Well, thank you. Okay, Dawn, you're still up. We're gonna move on to the FY '22 proposed operating budget.
Exactly, and I'm gonna share my screen, and I did a little PowerPoint, just because we're not all together in a room. So I'll walk through this, and again, I will just profit this presentation tonight basically by saying this is our starting point. So we put together a budget in December so that we have numbers to submit to the town as they start building their townwide budget. And so we, we use the best information we have to date, but know that between now and March, we'll continue to obtain better information, more updated information, and we'll continue to bring forward to you changes to this initial budget that we're showing. So just to give, because you have two new members in this process this evening, just a quick overview of the budget books that and I'll say budget PDFs now, because not everyone took budget books, so thank you if, if that was your choice. And if you have a choice, if you change your mind, just let me know, because we can easily deliver one to your house. But it has sort of the overview of sort of the budget process itself. It has a summary at high level of your operating categories. Included in there too is the town's budget guidance, so it's very helpful to read through that. It gives you more insight into the overall town budget. Where, as you can see, the school is a large piece of it, but it's nice to, as a school committee member, to understand the other components and the other issues that the towns are dealing with as they're looking at their larger budget. It includes a line, more detailed line item budget than you're usually seeing in your monthly reports, which I think is beneficial to look at because it helps you, I think, better understand the monthly report when you can see everything that rolls up into the categories. In the back of your operating budget too is just a detailed summary of staffing so that you can see the staffing between regular ed, special ed, your EA, central office, custodians, what makes, how the whole school works. You have projections for enrollment in the next section. You also then have a more detailed report about your added district. And finally, the last tab is capital, and we will have a revision to capital tonight to share with you after this. So let's get a little bit into the detail here. So obviously, any budget is based on assumptions. So the assumptions that we're using for the fiscal year 22 budget is that we will be in regular school next year, in-person, five days a week. And we are looking at level enrollment, so that's, that's how we set out to build this budget. We do work in compliance with the town's budget guidance, and if you read through that, you'll notice that they were requesting a level service budget and allowing 2% salary increases for those salaries that aren't under contracts.
Do you mind, can I interrupt for one second? Do you mind just explaining level service versus level funded for our members?
Right, so level service is that we, any cost that you need to incur to keep the same services in your building. So if your, if your staff salary is, go up, if your paper supplies budget goes, or costs go up, your utilities go up, you're providing the level service. So you're providing the same paper, the same utilities. So if those prices go up, that's level service. On the, on the flip side, in, in the town of Sherburne, a lot of times we're working with a budget guidance of level funded, which means we're gonna give you the same number of dollars that you had this year, next year. And therefore, sometimes that results in budget cuts, right? Because you, if the prices go up, you've got to figure out how you can keep service, you have to keep how, how you can do your budget with the same amount of money as you had last year. They do allocate salary increases, so it's, it's not that they are, you know, it's a continuous budget cuts. But that is a little bit different. So town of Dover has always had a huge need to, or a desire to keep investing in the schools, because they do feel like it has value to the town for property values. And so they've always tried to make sure that we are maintaining the same level of services from year to year regardless of those costs. I will say with that, though, we're always very careful with how we budget and making sure that we do go look for best prices for things. So we're never taking advantage of that guidance of level service. And of course, we align with our district strategic plan, so wherever their initiatives, we make sure that we provide the funding for those. And this particular year with all the, what's going on with post, with COVID, we realized there's gonna be strains on the financial outlights of the, of the state budget, and how that impacts you is really chapter 70. So that is funding that the towns get for education. You also get your circuit breaker, so even though it's mandated to come in at 75%, if that state doesn't have the funds for that, we at times have gotten paid or reimbursed less than that. And then it could have an impact on our grants. So our grants are a lot of times dependent on, again, what the monies are available at the federal and state level. So those are the three areas that we'll keep an eye on as we move into fiscal year 22. Just so you know, they, they really just approved the fiscal year 21 state budget. So they are a little behind, but they, they waited until they had as, as good of revenue projections as they could. And by doing that, I will say they, we were pretty much held harmless for fiscal year 21. The big question's gonna be what happens in fiscal year 22. Again, the monies that we get from the state are a small percentage. The majority of your budget is funded by taxpayers in, in the town.
Dawn, can I ask, while I'm thinking of it, because you just said, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen. Whatever happened with the circuit breaker transportation?
Right, so that, so that was part of the Student Opportunity Act, which was tabled for fiscal year 21.
And so 22, we don't know?
So 22, we don't know. But I will, I will say, we've been talking about this a lot in my job alikes. And the issue with the transportation, we won't see any reimbursement from that until the regular tuition circuit breaker, 75% mandated reimbursement is obtained. So if we're gonna have financial issues at the state level, that they might not be able to even get to that mandated amount, 75%, we probably most likely won't start seeing transportation reimbursement. So no one is building their budget, assuming that there's going to be any special ed transportation reimbursement based on even the SOA being in play next year. They just don't see us getting up to the 75% mandated reimbursement for tuition that would then kick in the transportation.
That would have been my assumption, but I just wondered if you.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's what, that's sort of what, if we get anything, it's gonna be sort of extra funds, not something that you'd want to build your budget on. Okay, so, so as we talked about earlier, when we were talking about out of district, your budget's really comprised of two components. One is the in-district, which is the operations at Chickering. And then your out-of-district is again, all out-of-district placements from age three through 22 of Dover residents. So the budget drivers for your in-district, basically payroll, is 85% of that budget. And it's driven by the contractual agreements, so increases across the board. For most of our contracts for fiscal year 22 is approximately 2%. Keep in mind that you do have the matrix associated with your educator's contract, which could provide step and lane increases ranging from 4% to 13%. So even though you have the, the cola of say, a little over 2% in some of those contracts, the step and lane increases are gonna make that number potentially look larger. I will say for Chickering, we're starting to have a larger percentage of our educators on the top steps. And therefore, that is really only bringing the cola increase into your equation. And you'll see that, I think, when you look at your budget in detail.
Dawn, could you just, sorry, for the newer members, just talk about the steps and the lanes?
Right, so hopefully you, you, I think you guys were around, have you seen the, if you've seen the contract, you'll see the matrix in the back, where you're in the lane based on your education level. And then your steps are all the years of experience. So when you join us, say you're in your masters and you've had three years of experience before you come to Dover Sherburne, that's where you would be on the matrix, is on your master's lane, step three. And so if you just stayed the course, you'd move to step four the following year. So built into those matrix steps are increases for you just obtaining that extra year of service. And those step increases, well, across the matrix, can be anywhere from 4%. There's like, there's a bonus one somewhere that's 13%, but most of them are 4% until you start making, getting down to the, the end of the matrix, where you will see some larger increases ranging from say, 5% to 8%. And again, on some of your detailed budget line items, where it only has one staff position, you'll actually see some of those steps being taken where there's a 5% to 8% increase. So it's, it all depends on where your staff are sort of sitting in the matrix, what your, what your overall payroll increase could be.
But if you've made it all the way through the steps, then the only increase you're getting is the, the 2% that Dawn referenced before.
Right.
So as you're going up, you're making more than the 2% because you're So as you're going up, you're making more than the two percent because you're going up in steps or down technically. And the more education you get, the more you shift into a new, more expensive lane. So the name of the game frankly for teachers is obviously get your education as fast as you can. So that, so that you can be in the furthest lane to the right. And then obviously stay long enough to be in that bottom corner. And, and, and that's, a lot of people don't understand the matrix. A lot of people do not understand that. And sometimes they'll say, oh my gosh, well, we'll just, just give them a two percent increase. They're already getting a raise in the steps and lanes, that's true, unless you're at the top step, then you're not getting anything. And so it's, it's, it's always a challenge to negotiate contracts around this, especially with people who don't understand the steps and lanes. But I can tell you that many, many, many school systems have tried to get rid of the, the steps and lanes. And that's not going to happen. It's just something that's national, it's in the state, and I don't think there's a public school in Massachusetts that does not have it.
Yeah, that's true. And the other, once you get to the top two, which you'll see when you look at your detailed budget, there's a line item called teacher longevity. That's where we actually, in this past contract, significantly increased that. Because that then is a way for those teachers who are at the top to get a little more annual income because they have the longevity payment. So that's another component of the educator's contract. Another sort of key budget driver, as you know, we're doing your budget, say, even as of March when we get there. But as we know, people's plans change, staffing needs change. So every year, at least for Chicreen, we see that there are some changes to the payroll based on staffing change or changes from budget to budget because of staffing changes that have taken place between the budget periods. And again, this year, when you look at your detail, you'll see some negative numbers as far as looking at salaries from year to year. And that's because the people who are in those seats or in those positions from year to year changed and some came in at a lower salary. So we had some savings that help offset your salary increases. On an annual basis, we look at the special education staff, staffing based on projected student cohort. Predominantly, that's in the educational assistant arena. And there was, you'll see this year, we did have one decrease on, for, right now, for special education staffing in that category. Because of a student who is graduating up to the middle school and has a one-to-one educational assistant. So we do look at that in detail for the townspeople who are listening. So that we never, our staffing is always equivalent to our cohort in the building. So that when the student needs a one-to-one, we add a one-to-one. When that student leaves us, the one-to-one is taken out of the budget.
Don, what do you refer to that as when you, you talk about, I, I want to say zero-based budgeting, but that's not what you refer to it as?
Well, it is sort of zero-based budgeting because we start as though we don't have a budget.
Right.
Right, and we build, and we build it up from what we, what we need.
Right, because a problem that happens a lot in schools, and this is something that I'm proud of that we've done. And, and I think it was started probably with Bill McCall of, but I am one hundred percent on board and was doing this as well in Easton. What will happen is somebody will say, well, I had three thousand in this line for textbooks last year. So this year I'll ask for, I don't know, thirty-five hundred. And the question is, well, you had three thousand in there because you bought, you know, you know, a hundred textbooks. But now you don't need those textbooks anymore, so that should go back to zero, right? And the answer is correct. So we do, Don, and does an excellent job of that, is part of our philosophy. And that's how we are, are responsible. And don't forget, resource efficiency is one of the goals in our strategic plan. And we, we live by it, we do not like to waste. If we don't need to pay for something, you know, we're not going to ask the taxpayers to give us money for it. If we do, we will come forward. And I think Dover's come to rely on that honesty. I think it's, it's a real, it's a hallmark of the system.
Exactly, and that's actually the last budget driver, and I'll, I'll skip it, student enrollment and go down to that. So that's just the continued trend budgeting, so that's.
I'm sorry.
That's looking at your actuals, and if you're not spending a line item, there's no need to continue to carry a larger amount than you really need. And we have been doing that really, probably since the, a year before I came on board, like as Andrew said, Bill McCall of started the trend budgeting, and that's because we were under budgetary, could, really budgetary constraints at that point because of the, what was happening and, and our expenses were just growing. And that was a way to sort of collaborate with the two towns and make them feel comfortable that we were using the resources effectively. And so in line items that continuously had surpluses, we reduced them. And so we do continue to do that on an, on an annual basis. Of course, your biggest in-district drivers, your student enrollment. And just to add some perspective, as Deb's been at Chicreen since two thousand and one, that's when I started as a parent at Chicreen. And we had thirty classrooms with over six hundred students. So one other area that I think we've been really good about is looking at our enrollment on an annual basis and making sure we're staffing appropriately. So instead of keeping those thirty sections, we have continued to decrease to meet the student population. And so at twenty-four, if you remember, we did reduce one section last year. But we, our student enrollment appears to remain level, so we are keeping twenty-four classroom sections. What we may see is some shifting of the grade sections of how many teachers are in each section. But I think based on what our projections are right now, we will be able to operate within your guidelines of seventeen to twenty-two and have the twenty-four classroom sections. So that is what this budget is based on. Just looking at the budget drivers for your added district, obviously placement drives that. So we are projecting twenty-six placements for fiscal year twenty-two, so that's what's in your version one point O. And just to put it in perspective, we had thirty-one placements in fiscal year twenty-one. We are seeing that, as I, as I told you in your early report, you're seeing of a, a large number of, what, we have eight new placements in fiscal year twenty-one, but for building or budget for fiscal year twenty-two, the increased cost of those are actually being offset by graduating and aging out placements. So although you look at a seven hundred thousand dollar over budget for fiscal year twenty-one, when we start looking at the detail, you're actually going to see a reduction in your added district budget. So that's the, the vastness of flux, of a fluctuation that can have in out of district. At the, you have a large transportation cost. We use Accept, which is a collaborative that we're a member of. They organize, we, we source out our transportation for out-of-district students to them. We're looking at that model right now for transportation costs, so that's still under review. I actually had a meeting with all the business administrators yesterday to sort of talk about how we want to see that model sort of roll out. And part of the reason we are looking at the model differently is because the potential to have circuit breaker reimbursement down the road. Just to, it, it's, it's a crazy reimbursement situation, I will say, but just to give you the gist of it, it's sort of like circuit breaker. The transportation cost that we have in our budget that we're paying for this year is really based on the students we had riding last year. And so it gets a little more complicated if we're going to start claiming on our, I, on our circuit breaker filings for a student, transportation cost. If what we're paying in transportation is sort of based on a different set of students, so.
Oh, by the way, Don?
Yeah.
Sorry, keep going, I, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I do want to add something, go ahead.
So we, as, as a business group, are trying to figure out how we want to have, accept assess our transportation cost. And so we are, actually, they're going to use Dover Sherburne as a guinea pig because I'm the one who feels the most. Adam and I think about having the current year expense equal your current year writers. That's just the accountant in me. And so I'm going to provide their current finance director with our numbers of our writers right now. Based on the projections, since I just built the budget, and see if we can figure out how to make the model work going forward. So we'll have more information for you at your January meeting. But that is a, that is a large piece of your out-of-district, it was, it's about four hundred and fifty thousand. Of that, Accept is probably of like three hundred ninety to four hundred thousand, so this does have an impact on your budget. So we'll update you in January on that process.
So when, when you, when you look at our out-of-district costs in, in the millions of dollars, that could be a budget buster, right? I mean, a couple of families could move in with some, some really challenged children who need extra services. And, and it can be really, really expensive. So that's why the state came up with the circuit breaker model. And it actually was developed in part by Perry Davis, who was the superintendent back then. And what he was concerned about was, in such a small system, he did not want the special needs students being identified year in and year out as these expensive, expensive students to educate. And because it was too easy to identify them. So what the state said was, we're going to give you a certain amount of money for your out-of-district costs. And essentially, once you pass forty thousand dollars in expense, you get, is it seventy-five percent reimbursement? And, but you get it a year later. So it's, it's complicated to follow, but it's really important. I'm saying this for our newer members because I don't know how familiar you guys are with circuit breaker. But Don talks about it all the time, and it's hugely important in our budget building, but it's a little complicated.
Right, and we'll, we'll talk about it a little bit more when I show you all the numbers. And you can definitely see the impact when you look at actuals versus budget. And something that I think I felt strongly about as a school committee member presenting to the town, and it's important for you guys to understand because your budget is a little bit inflated when you look at it on a budgetary basis versus your actual. And we'll see that when we look at the summary later in the slides. So those are our budget drivers, those are our assumptions. And so that's where, this is where we're going to get with all that. So your financial statistics, overall, your fiscal year twenty-two operating budget increases less than forty thousand dollars. And it's driven by your in-district increase of a hundred and fifteen thousand and a negative decrease in your out-of-district of about seventy-six thousand. And so I think that is, again, another year where we're not asking for a whole, whole lot from the town. And a lot of it is driven by out-of-district. If you look at where we came in last year for fiscal year twenty-one, we actually saw an operating budget decrease. But that was heavily driven by your out-of-district, where we saw almost a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar decrease in those tuitions. And as I said, you know, we're seeing continued reduction out-of-district expenses, which is, which is a great thing. And minimal in-district increases. And a lot of those are driven by, like I said, staffing changes and retirements. And I think I missed the point saying that the assumptions right now, we don't take into this first run any retirements. Unknown retirements at this point, we wait until later in January. Because the educators have an option to let us know in October if they think they're going to retire, but they have until February to finalize that. So we probably will squeeze it in and tell you in January, but that's why we don't roll those numbers out right away. So here's sort of the summary by category. And I show you five years, so you have actuals for three years, you have eighteen, nineteen, and fiscal year twenty actuals. This year's budget, and then the proposed budget. And if you look at the added districts, it looks, you, you would think that you look at fiscal year twenty and we, our actual was two point four million, and we're jumping up to three point one million. But that's because we are not taking into account in our budget the opportunity that we're going to have to receive any circuit breaker. And so you'll see down there, there's the asterisks at the bottom where it says the budget years include a hundred percent of your out-of-district cost. So for example, fiscal year twenty-one, we're anticipating approximately a million dollars in circuit breaker. That would take that three point one million that you see as a budget and bring it down to two point one. But remember, we're using probably about seven hundred thousand of that circuit breaker. So you won't see as large of a decrease in your budget versus actual this year because we actually are incurring a big chunk of those monies that we had budgeted.
It's important to note also for, especially for Colleen and Sarah, who may or may not know this. But a few years back, when we did, we did a kind of an audit of our special ed programming. And because we wanted to know, you know, where our expenses were, whether there were any patterns. Were there populations of kids who were leaving us for out-of-district placements that can cost anywhere from forty to two hundred and thirty thousand dollars per person? So we wanted to make sure that we had the proper programming. So we, for example, started the GRIT program at the middle school and the GOLS program for students with ASD, autism spectrum disorders. And so that program is at Pine Hill. The two schools, districts agreed that if Dover had a student who qualified, they could send them to that program as well. This was all part of, number one, doing what's best for the kids, which is educating them in their hometowns. That's what most people would prefer any day of the week. So they would prefer their kids be able to stay, but if there's not a program available for them, then sometimes they have to go somewhere else. So we try to make sure that we can provide programs for the, the kids. And at the same time, be efficient with our resources.
Right, and the issue with small towns are having a cohort of students in order to be able to have a program. So that's why you'll see that, you know, it seems like we have a lot of students, but we also want that the students to have the best education based on their needs. And we can't service, you know, many of the, some of these students at all because they don't, they wouldn't have a cohort of peers. And we wouldn't have the programming that they would need that they could get when they go to a whole school where that's a program that they, that they provide.
Right.
So, so just looking at your in-district, again, I said salaries is what's going to drive it. And if you look at your increase of a hundred and fifteen thousand, your salary increase is a hundred and fifteen thousand. And so that is, you know, what, what's increasing your fiscal year twenty to twenty-one budget. But as you see, it's also offset by some salary decreases that we have because you're only seeing an increase of salaries of one point eight six. The other educational expenditures, I will say, the largest decrease what's driving that is technology. We typically carry a pretty sizable technology replacement budget on an annual basis. If you've read the CARES, how we're using the CARES funding, there were a lot of technology items that we had to bring in immediately so that we could run the hybrid program. Because of that, some of the replacement cycles that we typically have were accelerated, so we don't have those for next year. So we were able to reduce that request for next year, I think by about, I think it's like by seventeen thousand dollars. So that, that's actually what's driving that line item. Transportation, as I mentioned to you, we're going to see a little bit higher of a increase than what was in the contract. And that's because we had to make up the ten thousand dollars that we were short in fiscal year twenty-one. And so that's, that's where you see those numbers. And our buildings and grounds expenditures are holding steady. The one thing that I will be doing between now and your next version is just checking, double checking our numbers for utilities. It was an odd year last year, so I wanted to be careful about jumping and, and doing anything with utilities until I spent a little more time looking at those. So for all three districts, looking at the utilities at a, at a closer level is something on my to-do list before your next round. But I think you had some, some cushion in those. And as we know, your oil is always a little bit of a cushion and, but I will take a look at that and see where we are. But right now, that's running flat. So that's your in-district. And out-of-district, as I said, if you look in your section four, you'll see a roll forward of how we've got from fiscal year twenty-one to twenty-two. You'll see some pretty large numbers. But again, that's, you'll, you'll notice that that's a reflection of what we're seeing in new placements this year. And the fact that we had more than a handful of students that were aging out of, out of district placements for fiscal year twenty-two. So overall, the request to the town right now is just under forty thousand dollars, which hopefully they'll be happy with. So next step, so what's going to happen is that, as I mentioned, at your January nineteenth meeting again, and all the way up to March eleventh, we could be presenting revised numbers based on updated information that we obtained. One of the annual meetings we have is with Dover Warren. Well, with, with the whole committee, we sort of walk through the budget just like we did with you guys. That's scheduled for January twenty-seventh. And then your budget hearing and final approval of the budget is scheduled for March eleventh. In the interim, as you spend time looking at the details, more of the detailed schedules that are in the budget packet, please feel free to send questions to Brooke. Then Brooke will send us to central office. And in January, we'll be able to reply to any of the specific questions that you may have in more detail. Because I know that's a lot to take in one night, but it allows you some time to sit with the budget packet, familiarize yourself with the information and bring forward any questions that you may have today. That allows us to provide whatever information you need to better understand the components.
Thank you so much, Dawn. Are there any kind of general questions about the budget for Dawn before you start to digest the line items? I know we talked about doing a budget workshop with Dawn, which I think would be super helpful. I don't think we need to add another meeting in right this second for folks, but maybe sometime in the spring when we have more time. We might think about doing that because it would be helpful. So I don't know, are there any questions for Dawn at this point?
We've got three months, but if you have anything tonight, yeah.
Or, you know, anything, how it's created, any, anything at all, just to kind of get you centered. Go ahead, Sarah, sorry.
Just one of the things that I wanted to make sure we are baking in to next year's budget is the important work that's going to be undertaken by the diversity, not, not diversity task force anymore, we have a new name, AID. But I, I just, I noticed in a couple of the line items, things like, you know, professional development or, you know, curriculum materials. I suspect there, there could be implications in those areas for some of the work that, the important work that this group is doing. And I just want to make sure that we're anticipating that and paving a way for it in, in the budget as we go forward.
Right, that's a great point, Sarah. One of the, one of the, the expenses that we know we're going to incur is that of an equity audit. And we just don't know how much that is going to be at this time. So sometimes what we will do, it, it all depends on how our year is going. But if, if we're not spending as much in, in one line, for whatever reason. For example, our substitute costs have dropped considerably this year. We might, if we know that it's going to hold steady for the year, we might actually be able to apply those funds to something else and, and come up with, within the, but within the operating, existing operating budget and not have to add to the budget. And that particular cost is likely to be one that would be incurred with our existing operating budget, we believe. Would you say that's right, Dawn?
Well, I, I was going to say a couple of things. One is that they, at the region level, the superintendent has a reserve for projects or items that come up during the year that are unexpected. So that's where sometimes, like when we did the security audit, when we did, I'm trying to think something else.
For the special ed audit.
Yeah, we, special ed audit, we use the superintendent's reserve at the region. Addition that we don't fully budget all your grants that we have. And so some of the diversity would probably fall under some of the title grants that we get. So that would be another avenue for us to do it the first year. And then if it's something that's going to be ongoing, then we build it into the budget the next year. But there is flexibility, even in the school committee line items, you have a little bit of special project money in each of the districts also for things that come up. So we're never so tight to the bone that we don't have a little leadway for things that come up. And then we all also have gift funds that could potentially play into this. And we also have fortunate for us, GSEF, that sometimes takes on some of these projects for us that we may not be able to fit into our budget. So I think there's.
A bunch of foundation.
Yeah, so there's a lot of, and this, this question came up at the other committee meetings also. So until I have something more firm, we don't bill it into the actual budget. But we do have safety nets in all the three districts to accommodate issues like this. And again, lucky for us, we've also got a lot of external resources that we can pull from.
So the bottom line is, we, we shouldn't, shouldn't worry that one.
It won't, it won't stop forward progress at all.
Exactly.
Can I, can I ask one question about, and this may have already been explained, but the Metco budget and the transporting, you know, the kids from there, that's not in, in our budget.
That's. Yeah, so it's a, it's a grant. Yeah. So the Metco grant is actually administered at the region, but it covers all three districts. So that is all covered in the Metco grant that the region actually sees on their grant summary, but does apply to all, all three districts.
Thank you.
Can I, Dawn, can I, Rob, I know you're multitasking, can Rob? Are you there? So you guys know Rob is our warrant liaison and is obviously taking a keen interest in this discussion. But he had sent Dawn and myself a question yesterday and I, Dawn, can you?
Oh, yeah, and I, I actually meant to, so on the enrollment, and, and Rob's question was a good one. And we had already sort of built this into both the elementary schools because they're the ones who saw the biggest fluctuation in, in school enrollment due to COVID nineteen and the, the larger number than normal of parents who chose to homeschool their children and a little bit of independent school placements, more so the homeschool. So in both Dover and Sherburne numbers for their projections for census, incorporated into the existing fiscal year twenty-one numbers are any of the homeschool students who selected that as of this year. So we didn't want to shortchange ourselves. So you'll notice when you go look at your enrollment that I provided for you, there's a little asterisk that tells you all homeschool students due to COVID are built, are included in your, your enrollment for fiscal year twenty as though they're in school.
So that's not remote students, that's actual students who unenrolled from school.
Exactly, because your remote students are already there. Remote students are already part of our budget and we're, we're providing education. So it's basically those families that decided to homeschool this year that appeared to be because of COVID reasons and not just the normal homeschool. So all those new elections, we built back into your in-school census so that we weren't shortchanging ourselves in the hopes that they'll all be coming back and joining us next year.
Okay, does that help, Rob, does that answer the question that you had?
Yeah, that was the first part. And the second part was just looking at the enrollment numbers between like now and five years out. It looks like we're looking at a reduction of upwards of fifty kids. And so I just didn't know what the trigger was for reducing teachers. Because that, as a parent, I speak differently than when I speak as a warrant committee member. So as a parent, that, that makes me really sad and, and nervous about which teachers will get, have to, to, to leave us. But as a warrant committee member, I also, you know, want to be fiscally smart about what we're, what we're, what we're budgeting for. And so I just didn't know when the, the trigger was to start looking at reductions.
So we, we don't look out five years, I will say, because things change. But we are, and Andrea and I had this discussion, I think just yesterday, we don't, we don't make short, but I would say, like, we don't make quick decisions, like we wouldn't cut, we look at long term. So you don't want to add a teacher or take away a teacher if you don't think that it's going to be a long-term effect or a long-term need. And so, because you don't want to be adding, subtracting, adding, subtracting teachers. So we're very methodical and really analyze the data before we would decrease or increase staffing. Because we want to see that person, either we have no need for that teacher for multiple years or we have a need for a teacher for multiple years. So that's sort of the methodology that we've used and why you see that we sort of hold steady for a little while and then we have to make a decision.
We also, we also try to take advantage of opportunities. So if somebody leaves us and we know we could reduce a section, that's the time to do it, right? Because then we don't have to cut somebody we've just invested in.
Right.
Because usually it's one of your newer people. So we try to be smart about that. Last year's reduction came as a result, came because somebody left and we didn't replace them. Isn't that right? Was it last year?
Well, no, we had to make a reduction last year just because the kindergarten was so small.
All right.
And, and, and the other numbers, it looked like that was going to be something that we were going to be able to maintain, right? The twenty-four, which is, which is where we are, where we're at the same place we were last year. So, but yeah, there have been times where we've known we've got to have, we're going to have a retirement and it appears that we're on that, that brink of having to do the reduction and we've done that.
That's helpful.
Thanks. Yeah, and I'll do, if you remember, I'll do a more, a deeper dive into the enrollments next go around where I take the one-year, three-year, half it and show you all the different scenarios. And then that gives you a little more insight into how things could turn out and where we at least stand for, where we're up against the, either upper, either range, right? And where we can watch it. So that'll, that'll be more information forthcoming in January.
Right, because enrollment projections are really tricky, right? So you'll look around town and say, oh my gosh, they're building a lot of houses. That means we're going to have more kids. Well, not necessarily, right? It really, or I know five families moved in this summer, okay, but five moved out. So that's why we use those charts and we look at the, the one-year and three-year to, to estimate what we think our numbers will be. And I don't know if it was Bill or you, Dawn, who came up with that model, but it works really well.
Yeah, so Bill built the three-year projection model for us. And I think there's been a definitely year of tickering where we had a huge increase. And so we started thinking, when Adrian was around, where we were thinking that was going to be something that was going to continue. So that's when we started breaking out and doing the one-year and the three-year projection. But I do think it serves us well because it takes, it takes into account, it takes enrollment from October first, one year, to October first, the next year. And in that, it has all the in-migration and the out-migration. So it takes into consideration the normal move-ins, the normal move-outs, the normal kids who decide to go to independent schools. So it, it, it is, we're in a community, I think, in most cases that operates pretty similar year to year. And so that's, I think that's why it's served us well, is that it really took into theory everything that happens in Dover and Sherburne and the region.
Adrian would always know how many kids are signing up for soccer and that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He, he had all the, he had all the, the hotlines to the realtors in town. Just passed him today, walking his dog.
Rob, thank you. I'm sorry to put you on, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I feel like you're in, you're in this with us, so.
Absolutely, and I benefited from us not losing a section because Mrs. Emerson is my twins teacher this year and she's phenomenal. And so, you know, as a parent, human resources are our most important thing. So I, I think that, you know, many of the folks on the warrant committee are parents of kids in the school. So we recognize that, again, human resources are, are, are the most expensive, but yet the most important. So, so, so thank you for the, the detail then. There also, I, I would just keep in mind, Dawn, that you should keep your ear to the ground about some of the, the development things that are happening in town too. Because there's some potential for maybe, as we see decreasing, looking, they might spike up again based on some of the crazy development things that could happen in the next five or five, five years or so.
And the good news is that we have a building that can accommodate that.
Yeah.
Unlike Sherburne.
Right.
Which is also looking at some developments, developments and they're, they're a little tighter on space.
Is it thirty sections that we can accommodate?
Thirty, thirty sections is what the school was built on when, when Deb and I started there. I will say we've taken over some spaces that used to be classrooms for, sort of say, special ed and other things, because we've, you know, our curriculum has definitely changed since two thousand and one, but there's still plenty room for growth if we need it.
But remember, when you, when you have development in town, they don't all move into first grade. You know, they, they spread out across the twelve grades. And that's why it's not as frightening, but it's tricky because you can't predict. So if it's over fifty-five housing, that's good for schools. If it's three-bedroom units, you know, of affordable housing, that's not necessarily great news for the schools. It could mean, you know, a bigger drain on our resources.
And good for other reasons, so you never know.
That's right, correct, totally, totally correct.
So I will ask you to approve just the starting point so that we can pass it along to Rob and his group and the town as they start building their budget.
So we should do that now, Dawn, before we go into capital?
Yes, yeah, two separate votes.
Okay. Um, okay, so this is the version to be submitted to the town. So do I have a motion to accept the proposed FY twenty-two operating budget, what, version one, as presented in your packet?
Leslie Leon, I'll move the motion.
Thank you, and a second.
Colleen Burt, second.
Thanks, Colleen, and any discussion? Okay, do a roll call, Colleen.
Colleen Burt, yes.
Sarah?
Sarah Gutierrez, Dan, yes.
Leslie?
Leslie Leon, yes.
And Brooke Maderes, yes. Thank you, Dawn, so much. And, okay, take us through.
So remember you approved capital in October, but I said it was a preliminary because we still had to do some research on some of the projects. So what I'm bringing forward to tonight is version two with two changes. One is the heat water circulation pumps has been removed because within the last year, one actually, actually the last year and a half, one was actually repaired. And to do any work we need to do on the second one would be under the capital threshold. So we would just take care of that when we need to under our maintenance reserve fund that's in your operating budget. So that line item has been removed. And I have received a more updated quote for the cold water booster system. So that went from thirteen-one, that was in your first version, up to fifteen-five. The quote that I had was about a year and a half old, so we had the contractor update it. And so there was a slight increase. So now you have the two remaining items that are on there are the classroom hallway or the hallway floors, which was on your first version, remove the heat water circulation pumps and increase the quote on the cold water booster system so that your current capital request right now for next year is a hundred thousand five hundred dollars. So I'll ask that you update this version or approve this version so that it can be, again, submitted to the capital committee for the town.
Now, Dawn, I have a question that may, maybe others have as well. Look at twenty twenty-two and then twenty twenty-three. And you see that jump, is there any benefit in?
Kind of spreading it out. So that's what we'll do is we'll start digging. So we, we follow onsite inside basically. And then when we start digging deeper, things will start shifting. As I, as we are working on the, the larger capital projects at the region with the rooftops, we have engaged with a building envelope consultant who's helping us with our estimates and deciding when we need to do those roofs. We're going to then use the same firm to look at checkrings in the spring. With that information, we'll have a better idea of where that larger project should sit. They may tell us that we can push it out for a couple of years or it may be something we need to do. What that study will also do for us is give us a more market, a better market value of the cost of that. Because right now, we're, we're carrying the number that's on the inside, onsite insight report. So we'll have a more valid estimate for that. The EMS system is one of those projects that has been continuing to push that a little bit because it is, it needs to be built upon the region doing their EMS system. And so that has been fully approved at the region. We just sort of lost a year because of COVID and that we weren't able to sort of go out, get that project bid and get it started. So depending on how that works out, that's another one that could swing out another year. We just are holding those placeholders right now in this way. But my guess is that's not how that's going to play out over those, from twenty-three on. I'm sure there is definitely going to be some shifting. It's just we don't have enough data right now to say. say where that might be. And we don't want to just falsely start moving things around.
We wouldn't bring anything forward then? You see those, no, Rob says
Yeah, no, there's nothing that I'd want to move forward, though, that would make economic sense to move forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we've got some roofs in the other, other part. We were looking at with everything on onsite insight, we were looking at so many roofs this year that it was going to be a really, probably a contentious town meeting. So the fact that you guys can spread it out is going to make a COVID town meeting be a lot safer for the town and spread out the cost for the town with the different roofs that the town has to kind of deal with. Instead of four or five roofs all in one year, we're now looking at it spread out. So even on your budget, it may look like you're, you're having a light year from a town perspective on a capital. We're on roofs. It's, it's, this has been, this is a godsend to, to the, to the capital budget committee. So we're really, really appreciative of, of Dawn's work on this. So, so thank you.
Well, that makes perfect sense. So thank you for interjecting that, Brooke.
Yeah. And that is something that we do. I think that's the beauty of capital. So is that they do look at, at everything and, and they'll give us guidance. They'll say, can you spread it out a little better? Can you, do you have any latitude to move this to a different year? So that's part of our one-on-one meeting that we'll have with them is they'll give us more insight as to what they're hoping for from the, the larger town perspective as what we'll do. But by the spring, we're going to have some better information, I think, so that when you look at your five-year plan next year, it's probably going to look a little different, only because we're going to have acquired more information in order to move forward on some of these larger projects. So we're definitely making headway at the region, which then trickles down to the two elementaries.
Any questions for Dawn or Rob, I guess, capital questions? It looks like we're no more in next month. So.
Well, yeah. I mean, I think your numbers are going to stay level right now for fiscal year twenty-two. Their other years is more of a support for the towns for their financial planning. You're not really of green, but you, you're not really approving those. You're just sort of approving that that's what, right? Yeah.
Well, Rob can fall off his chair for next year. So hopefully we'll be okay. All right. So if there's no more questions at the moment, um, we need to vote on this as well. Do I have a motion to accept the proposed FY twenty-two capital update as presented in the packet?
I'm so moved.
Leslie's gone. So Sarah?
Oh, yeah. Here, I can't, I can't find my Zoom for some reason. My kids went to bed. So I'm sorry.
A second.
Pass the wine behind there, Leslie.
No, I just can't. I'm lost. I'm lost on my screen.
Down to the app on the bottom of the screen, Zoom.
Oh, okay. Ah, I found it.
Uh, Colleen Burt, yes.
Sarah?
Sarah Gutierrez, yes.
Leslie?
Leslie Lea, yes.
And Brooke Maderes, yes. Okay. Thank you, Dawn, as always. Okay. So let me see, we're at the consent agenda, which is the minutes from October twentieth. We need to vote on that as well. Is there, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda in your packet?
I'll move the motion.
Thank you. And second?
Colleen Burt, second.
So many opportunities tonight. All right. Colleen?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Sarah?
Sarah Gutierrez, yes.
Leslie?
Leslie Lea, yes.
And Brooke, actually, I'm gonna abstain from that one because I wasn't here. Um, okay. So in your packet, you also have communications, the other school committee minutes. There is an item here, eleven items for the January nineteenth meeting. Andrew, I don't know what the intention was for that.
Just to see if the committee had any particular items they wanted to have on the agenda.
Right. If, if anyone had something they wanted to talk about.
Obviously, budget version two point O will be on there.
And, and this isn't the only opportunity, obviously.
But if there is anything, you can let us know. Okay. Um, okay. I think we're good. Yes. Anything else? Next meeting, January nineteenth. I think that's all I have. Thank you, everyone. Oh, gosh. Have a good holiday. I can't, it feels weird. It's a holiday. But I hope everybody has some time to rest and recharge and have some family downtime. And
Same to all of you. Same to all of you, Brooke.
For everything that everyone's been doing and grateful for this community. So I appreciate that.
We, we appreciate what you guys do, your volunteers. We get paid for it at least.
That is true. I know. Y'all earn your
Holidays, everyone.
You do all earn your money. So thank you. And take care and we will see you in the new year.